We're just waiting for Elliot Doyle. Senator Rucker is ill and cannot take it.
Okay, okay. All right. So, well, we'll get started. And since it's 1:30, and I just want to kind of lay out that this is an opportunity for the county commission to meet with our legislators and talk about issues that are important to the commission. And we don't entertain public comment at this meeting. We do that earlier during the regular meeting, but this is not for -- we're not having a public comment portion for this meeting. So, we have several things on the agenda that are of interest to the county and that we would like to discuss with you. It's going to be very informal. So, I think we can look at the agenda. Oh, my thank you. Yeah, just put the -- yeah. And first, we'll give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves and to -- and then we'll get started. Do you want to go first, or it doesn't matter? Sammy?
I'll go. I'm Sammy Brown, recently elected to the House of Delegates in the 65th District. Proud to represent my hometown of Charlestown and ransom extended. For me, my background prior to this was advocacy. I was a labor advocate, worked for the AFL-CIO, represented working families for several years before I decided to run for office. So, the root and the crux of all that I do and that I'm after as a legislator will be based on the betterment of you and this community and how you can survive and thrive in the state of West Virginia. Just some head or some insight, I was recently appointed to the following committees, so please do feel free to reach out to me. I was one of very few freshmen to be appointed to Judiciary Committee, which I'm very proud of. I will also be on political subdivisions and then return to my wheelhouse in labor and industry. I do see the legislative priorities here. I'm excited to dig into these. But what I am after, my value set, will always be about you and the betterment of families and people. Now, I do have a progressive base and a progressive ideology, but I think the premise to this conversation and to make sure that we do well as a legislative body and then reaching back to our local governments is to work in a truly unified and bipartisan approach. So, regardless of what our ideologies were beforehand, whatever our platform points were, or even what our slants were, I'm here to make sure that you are taken care of, and I will do everything I can to reach out and make sure that I get that full review on what we can do to make things better for you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Delegate Paul Espinoza. Good to be here. I always appreciate the invitation to meet with you prior to the legislative session, to hear your priorities. And certainly, I'll want to first and foremost really listen to what are some of the priorities that you have. About to begin my fourth term in the West Virginia House of Delegates. Seems just yesterday that I was kind of a new kid on the block, like my colleague from the 65th District. But certainly looking forward to the session. It does begin this coming Wednesday. We'll have interim meetings on Monday and Tuesday and then right into the 60-day session on this Wednesday. Honored that the speakers asked me to serve as the House Majority Whip for the coming session. And in addition to my whip duties, we'll be continuing service on the House Finance Committee, as well as the Roads and Transportation Committee, as it's currently known. I think there's some discussion about reconfigure -- re -- establishing that committee as a Technology and Infrastructure Committee. But in any case, it's a -- I've served on Roads and Transportation for a number of terms now, and so while the name will change and the overall scope might change a little bit, still will be involved in the Roads and Transportation as well. I'd say, just as we go into the legislative session, you know, I think there is reason for optimism. Just received the December revenue reports, and they continue a very positive trend as of the December revenue estimates exceeded estimates by -- I'm sorry, the December revenue collections exceeded estimates by nearly $45 million. So, for the first six months of the current fiscal year, FY19, we're $186 million ahead of estimate. Now, you may recall that the legislature declined to appropriate the $58 million, the $58 million revenue adjustment that the governor had provided prior to the start of the -- or during the 2018 session. So, if you consider the $58 million along with what we're ahead of existing revenue estimates, we're about $244 million ahead of revenue estimates. So, that's certainly a good place to be, a better place to be than we were just a few years ago. I think there is indication that, you know, a number of the positive reforms we've implemented are having a positive effect. With that said, I think, certainly I believe, and I think a number of us in leadership believe, that it's still imperative that we approach the legislative session in a fiscally responsible manner. The governor has already proposed, and I think there'll be strong support for an additional 5% aggregate pay raise for our state employees, including our teachers and our school service personnel. Also, a proposal to provide additional funding for the Public Employees Insurance Program to the tune of $100 million, you know, over the next couple of years. So, you know, that obviously will, you know, require a good bit of the surplus, if you will. So, I think, again, it'll be imperative that we continue to approach our budget in a fiscally responsible manner. There, you know, our tax and revenue folks have kind of raised, you know, the caution sign, if you will, to indicate that as some of the construction projects, particularly related to the trans-state gas pipeline that's under -- some of those projects that are under construction, as those begin to wind up towards the end of the year, you know, certainly there'll be an impact on personal income tax, which has been a very bright point, along with severance taxes. So, as those projects kind of wrap up towards the end of this year, 2019, I think that it's expected that some of those revenues, at least in terms of personal income tax, are going to see a downtick. Hopefully, you know, the severance tax receipts will continue to be in a positive, you know, positive trajectory. But, again, not knowing that and certainly being accustomed to cyclical changes in, you know, severance taxes, severance tax receipts, again, I think it's going to be important that we just be very fiscally prudent and not -- and resist the temptation to go on a spending spree. I think there'll be, again, bipartisan, strong bipartisan support for the governor's proposed 5% aggregate pay raise. I think there's certainly going to be interest in additional infrastructure investments, really addressing some of the backlog of deferred maintenance that we've seen over the last some years. And I think there's also support for the idea of trying to give some of the surplus revenue back. I know for years, there's been proposals to provide an exemption for the Social Security tax here in West Virginia, and I anticipate that there will be movement on that this session and perhaps some other tax reform as well. But, again, good to be with you today and look forward to hearing your perspective as we prepare to go to Charleston.
Thank you. Delegate Doyle has joined us. Good afternoon.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late. There's a -- it's a one-lane road at the underpass at Carneville, and I just happened to hit it at the wrong time. So, the -- I hope that that can eventually be fixed. To pick up on, I didn't hear what Sammy said, but to pick on what Paul said, it's -- I think the surplus there is real in this sense. About $100 million of it will go away as a result of the completion of the pipelines. But I think that will be replaced by about an additional $100 million in severance taxes, which will result in increased drilling as a result of the existence of the pipelines. So, I think that's going to be roughly an even trade. There is about another -- or most of the surplus is real. About another $50 million of it is real in this sense. It's the result of the state, at the instruction of Governor Justice, now requiring remote sellers to collect the sales tax. Remote sellers, a lot of people call that the internet sales tax. Internet sales are only about half of it. It also includes telephone sales and mail order sales and all kinds of stuff like that. So, it will -- it has resulted in a real increase permanently of about $50 million a year. So, of the $200 million surplus, about at least $150 million of it is real ongoing. Now, the downside is this. The pay raises, the 5% average pay raise that the legislature gave last year to state employees and school employees cost about $140 million. And only about $100 million of that was funded on an ongoing basis. So, we're going to have to find another -- the other $40 million approximately was various one-time sources put together. So, we're going to have to find another $40 million permanently for that. Also, if we're going to do another pay raise, and I agree with Paul, we absolutely have to do it, I'm for it, that's another $140 million. So, now, we've just spent $180 million of $150 million surplus. So, I agree with him. We have to be very, very fiscally careful, and we'll see what happens.
Tell them your priorities, sir.
Oh. Those are some of my priorities. That -- and also, we have to come up with, I'm going to add another $50 million to it. The governor's proposed $200 million for PEIA works for two years. We have to have a permanent stabilizing mechanism for that. So, that means, really, we've got to come up with $50 million per year permanently. So, that takes that $180 up to about $230. I think it's -- and instantly, I'm going to be on the Education Committee. Another thing we must do, there are three major proposals in higher education that the legislature will deal with this year, one of which is base budget funding of the institutions. Shepherd and Blue Ridge Community College, I think, as many of us know, have been seriously underfunded. That has to be fixed, and I think it can only be fixed with new money. I don't think it's going to be possible to get that money from the base budgets of the other institutions that have it. Also, another one is the -- this question of free community college. I think the legislature wants to do that. Again, the question is money. I personally think it's a mistake to only do community college. I think we need to pay for also the first two years free of a four-year school and at least a year of vocational training. And the reason I say that is this. Depending on the person, any one of those three tracks might be the right one. We should not be trying to drive square pegs into round holes. We need to take advantage of the best potential of everything, single one of our citizens. So, we shouldn't be picking favorites, one among the three. And the other, the third higher education major issue will be the organizational organization of the system. You know, do we retain the Higher Educational Policy Commission? Do we retain it but in an amended form? Do we do away with it? I personally think we need to keep it or something like it, because if you do away with something like that and there's no referee to keep institutions from trying to step into each other's territories, we're going to end up with more money wasted than we have now. So, that is a fundamental role of the Policy Commission, is to act as a referee. And also, for some of the smaller institutions, it's a resource, which is absolutely necessary. What form that takes, I don't know, but that is my view on that. And also, in K-12, there will be a movement for charter schools. I am absolutely opposed to charter schools, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments and your insights and here -- I appreciate hearing your priorities, too. We have some of our own. And we'll start at the top. I'll read them off, and then we'll start at the top. And the first thing on the list is Rockwell. I don't know what that, I don't know.
I can start if you want.
Yeah.
Is there a printed document?
It's actually an agenda, and I think, I don't know if there are other agendas back there or not, that they do have copies of.
Can I get one, too?
I'm taking it out already.
I was the responsible one.
Good figure. Okay, so, you can see the items on here include Rockwell, the Mark Train, Property Safety Enforcement Agency, Far Chief Position, Designee, Joint Dual Services Legislation, Unclaimed Body Legislation, and then, I don't know if you've seen the County Commissioners Association Priority List or not, but I brought that with me, too. But we're going to start with ours, and depends on what time we have, I don't know what your schedules are. Did -- I don't know if we have an end time, but we're not going to keep you here all afternoon.
I didn't set an end time.
Okay. So, we'll play it by ear.
Well, and I think we also wanted to address the concerns. It's not on the list, the Horsemen Breeders Fund, making that hole again, and some of the issues.
Ask about that.
Yes.
Not that, not to horribly interject, but I was going to ask about what we were thinking about the horsemen. And then, I do see a net here, so tourism was another issue that I would like to discuss, if we can.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, yeah, that's definitely something that we need to discuss. That's important to the county and. But let's start at the top of our agenda, and the first thing on the list is Rockwell. I don't know whose agenda that is, but go ahead.
I think it was just a consensus agenda item. I mean, there's no denying that this is probably one singular issue that, I mean, we saw during the election. I know Delegate Doyle and Brown were pivotal on this issue. And, I mean, you saw what happened to the county commission for the past year. I mean, our residents are not happy, I guess, and a lot of that notion is the state brought down a lot of this on our backs. Yes, the county approved it, but a lot came from the state, the Development Authority, et cetera. I guess my question to you all would be, what legislation would you propose to fix the potential mistake or whatnot that was, that occurred with Rockwell? I mean, what bill would you propose that doesn't come across as anti-business as the state of West Virginia is concerned, but stops something like that from happening?
Sure. I'll go ahead if you want.
So, I don't want to.
First of all, Mr. Commissioner, the term "anti-business" is in the eye of the beholder. One person's anti-business legislation is another person's environmental protection legislation. So, it's all up to each individual. I have actually turned in four bills to be drafted that, in one way or another, relate to this question. I've seen two of them. I haven't seen the others. They haven't been given to me in draft form yet. One would be a requirement for much greater transparency. The bill that I've got is, would require, no longer would an applicant be required only to put a legal ad. The applicant would have to get an ad big enough that every single piece of information in it would have to be in at least 12-point type. So, however, however big that would be in a given situation, that's how much advertising they would have to get. And in addition, they would also be required to advertise in various online venues so that people knew about what was going on. Another one would require that, and these are the two that I've seen, the other one would require that any applicant that were going to invest more than $10 million or have a physical plant of more than 25,000 square feet under roof, you would have, you must automatically have a public hearing in the county, rather than simply waiting for it to be requested. So, so those are the two that I'm satisfied with. I've got some other ideas, but I'll turn it over to the others here.
One thing to follow up, I guess, specific to Rockwell, though, is there anything that can be done specifically for Rockwell, in your eyes?
It all depends on how long this plays out. A permit is a permit until it's over. If we would get a change in the law, and there would be a given permit that, say, would extend beyond that limit, and they'd have to apply again, then I think there's a pretty decent chance that the new application would have to be under whatever new rules there were. But that is all I can say. I'm not a lawyer, and that's all I, yeah.
So, my take on this particular project was truly about concern from the community and then health and safety standards, and I'll just take some quick nods if that was really your general concern, yeah. So, my approach to this, for one, I would already had a very environmentalist stance. So, I switched gears from going from power purchase agreements, which would be a bill that I'm about to co-sponsor, but now I'm going into health assessments, reconfiguring the air permit, and then I think we all are in agreement on transparency. The other thing I wanted to do is to make sure that we have a partnership between the legislature and the county commission and to empower you so that we don't have this again. I do feel like you were put underfoot. I don't feel like you were given everything you needed to make the most sound decision, and I think you were trying your very best to bring development to Jefferson County. However, the temperature within the community and the divisiveness that has come as a part of this project, we cannot ignore, regardless of how you feel about development. And let me tell you, from knocking thousands of doors, this is not an anti-industry perspective. This is not an anti-development perspective. This is far more emotional than just law and legislation, and that's really what I want to get across to this commission. This is far deeper than that. Our community felt betrayed. They felt disgruntled, and they felt that, at very least, they should have been consulted with what was going on in their backyard. Furthermore, we do have a multitude of Title I schools, and that was also an issue when you have a marginalized community to the left, and then you have a Title I school directly adjacent from the property. Now, granted, you will be crossing over, what is it, the bridge corridor, bridge, to actually get to the working site at this point. But the real concern here was what does that do, what resources does that take away from, what toxins are emitted into that community that has already been marginalized, and then a school that already has a deficit as far as resources. My focus here in particular, and it's, you know, it's something I've run on the entire time that we were doing this campaign, has been to create the laws to empower you to do better business. Now, I could go further into talking about corporate social responsibility. I could go further into talking to you about workplace safety standards, and then also the Jobs Act. I am an adamant proponent of the Jobs Act, making sure that seven out of 10 workers are West Virginia workers. West Virginia workers get West Virginia jobs, and that is my standard by which I would like to see development and business and industry in this community, and that in no way is partisan. That's actually something that we very much can collaborate on, and I know that we can perpetuate that, and I actually believe that we can bring in better businesses. Now, to your question, though, Commissioner Compton, how does this directly affect Rockwell? The reality is, and this is something that we've articulated during the campaign, was that legislature will empower you and create the laws in which we create a climate for better business. That's how we'll do that. And we're also going to empower you through Home Rule, which I'm also a proponent for, and we'll also make sure that you have everything you need to have the community's input so that you can make a more holistic decision going forward, and we will back you up on that. That's how we're going to do this, together.
I appreciate, just one quick thing. So, in your eyes, like, not much can be done about Rockwell, you think, then? Going forward, as you all laid out, that going forward, things could be done, but as we are right now, it's going to be pretty tough to stop Rockwell, per se.
Well, if I could respond, no, that, I disagree with that. Particularly, the decision yesterday by the Maryland Board of Public Works to deny the permit for the pipeline underneath the Potomac River, I think, is a significant victory for people fighting Rockwell.
Absolutely.
That will, is one of the things that could result in a long enough delay so that new legislation would, in fact, be viable. And instantly, Commissioner, I agree with you. This was sent to you by Charleston. This is not something that any of you bear the responsibility for going out and getting.
Agreed.
Sure. Commissioner Compton, certainly I'd be open to seeing, you know, what, you know, what you would propose, you know, what legislation that you'd be looking at. I guess I would want to understand that more clearly, exactly, you know, what you think is needed as far as actual legislation. I think with regard to the pilot agreement, which I, you know, I think those of us who have advocated for the repeal or transition away from the tax on business equipment and inventory, I think there is strong support for, you know, trying to reform our tax code, and it would require a constitutional amendment because it's a property tax and it's, that's spelled out in our constitution. But I think there is support for transitioning away from that because I think it's important to recognize that the whole concept of the pilot agreement, I think that was designed to address what is widely recognized as a job killer, the tax on business equipment and inventory. We're one of only a handful of states in the country that have that tax on business equipment and inventory. Now, because that would require a constitutional amendment, that requires two-thirds votes of both the House and the Senate. Clearly, that would require support, bipartisan support, because, you know, there's not a two-third majority of any one party in either the House or the Senate. So, if we're serious about addressing the whole concept of pilot agreement so we can get away from that, then that's, you know, we'll need to move forward with something along the lines of tax reform to do that. And so, I think that's certainly an area that I'm hopeful we'll actually be able to move forward with. The big challenge there is, of course, as you're well aware, the majority of property tax funds our school systems, as well as county government, and so it's a matter of doing that in a way that safeguards, you know, your revenues. I applaud the governor for coming forth with, and the Commerce Secretary, former Commerce Secretary Thrasher, for coming forward with at least an initial proposal. I think one of the big concerns that we had, particularly here in the Eastern Panhandle delegation, was that while there was a, there was a provision to hold harmless, you know, counties initially, that "hold harmless" clause was, you know, meant different things in a non-growth county or a county that's declining in population and economic activity compared to a county such as Jefferson or Berkeley that's seeing growth. And so, we weren't convinced, many of us were not convinced, that that "hold harmless" provision would really have protected, you know, counties such as Jefferson going forward. So, that's, you know, that's obviously the big hurdle there. While I certainly would support trying to get away from that tax on business equipment and inventory altogether, you know, that's a pretty significant sum. You know, I've seen some estimates approaching $400 million or $500 million, you know, for that price tag to completely eliminate that. You know, it may be, and I think the proposal that the governor had put forward last year would be a, you know, an initial step to try to transition away from that tax, you know, with obviously the goal of hopefully being able to eliminate that altogether. As far as a few of the other proposals that my colleagues have mentioned, you know, I would just, just based on what I hear from my colleagues, you know, downstate, obviously many of them followed the media on what kind of transpired here, and obviously, many of them expressed interest in kind of understanding exactly, you know, what was transpiring, what was the concern. I don't see just I don't see just, you know, the reality is, is that there's probably 54 other counties of the 55 that would, you know, love to have, you know, the Rockwell project or a project very similar to it. I mean, that's just the reality. I don't see a great deal of support for doing anything that's going to make it more difficult to attract job creators to our state. Certainly, I and others believe that it needs to be done in an environmentally responsible manner. I'll certainly continue to advocate for the adoption, you know, of the EPA standards. And that's essentially what you have here. It's not as if West Virginia, you know, watered down the EPA standards with regard to this project. You know, as is normally the case, we typically look to the federal EPA, you know, for guidance on these issues. And that's essentially what you had, is, I think has been, you know, documented. The current, the standards that would apply to the Rockwell project essentially were formulated, strengthened under the Obama administration with considerable input by the Sierra Club. And I think that's what we typically look for as a state. We look for, you know, what comes from the EPA when we're considering that. So I'll certainly continue to advocate for, you know, looking very closely, you know, at what the EPA promulgates, you know, rather than try to, you know, adopt something that would in any way weaken those standards here in West Virginia. And trying to see what else.
I have a pretty good response from everybody. Just one quick thing, the pilot agreement, we have to abate those taxes just to even begin to be competitive with surrounding states. That's one issue already, so we're already at disadvantage. So just to even be even, we need to abate those. Then we can't offer, and then it's just, that thing needs to go somehow. And God bless you all, try to figure that out.
But it only happens with a, again, it's going to require a constitutional amendment. And I see, I see Executive Director deal here in the front row. I suspect you already know this. Without those pilot agreements, you know, you're just not in the ballgame with some of these projects, whether it's Rockwell or some other, you know, project that perhaps would be more desirable in this community. Without those pilot agreements, you're not even in the ballgame. It's a non-starter. So that's the challenge, you know? If you, if you, if you're suggesting that you eliminate that pilot agreement or the ability to do, offer pilot agreements, then you're basically saying no to virtually any significant project in West Virginia, even if it's a project that's, you know...
If I could add on to that, there are a number of states that do pilot agreements, many of which do not have this personal property tax. This is something that began probably about 30 years ago or so. And it has resulted in a race to the bottom among states to attract business. And it's unfair to the businesses that are already in those states because they don't get that kind of tax break. I agree with Paul that the personal property tax on business is a job killer. I think, and it's about, Paul, I think actually that $400 million or $500 million would be if we did away with the personal property tax on everybody, including individuals. I talked to Mark Mucow, who is at the Department of Revenue and who is Deputy Secretary of Revenue. And he was my compatriot, as I was the other Deputy Secretary of Revenue for three years. And Mark and I get along pretty well. He's a lot more conservative than I am, but we're really good friends. And he's really smart. He told me that the whole thing is on business is about $270 million. And you have to look at it in four quadrants. You have, about half of that is on retail and about half of that is on manufacturing. And within each of those, about half is on inventory and the other half is on equipment. Now, I'm going to throw in, this is a personal opinion now. I think of all of those four, the biggest job killer is the inventory tax on retail. And that is about $70 million. That would be a much easier nut to crack, to get away with that one, if we had to replace the money. The, so at any rate, but I recognize that's the, that Paul's right. Whatever you do, you're going to have to come up with a dedicated funding source to schools and counties and cities that are going to replace that money dollar for dollar or there's going to be too much opposition to pass it. I do disagree with Paul that there are 54 other counties that would take Rockwell, maybe 45. But I've talked to people in, not just Berkeley County, but Morgan and Hardy and Hampshire. And I've talked to some of my colleagues from other counties in this state. And have said, hey, we don't want it. So I would disagree with that, anyway.
I will say to offer support to colleagues and fellow leadership. There, we are a conversation starter in the state of West Virginia at this point. This could change the face of how we develop. And it could be in a positive way or it could be in a way that it continues to be detrimental. And we do have quite the task on our hands to do right by the people of Jefferson County. What that looks like go forward, I think you have to go back to the people that put all of us in these seats. That's the reality of the situation. And I will speak to this very directly in my own district. I can tell you about half of the people felt very adamantly opposed to this project. And the other half said, Sammy, we need those jobs desperately. And you're a labor advocate. We need you to work for us to get jobs. And I represent all of those people. We all do. And so what I'm saying here, more than anything, is about really getting down to the most ethical and the most emotional part that you can as a leader to really come to consensus on what this looks like go forward in industry for Jefferson County.
Commissioner Compton or others, is there a specific proposal that you're advocating that would somehow unwind this proposed project? I mean, I mean, as I understand it, you essentially have an entity that has, I believe, complied with all state, local and federal laws. How do you, again, I'm just, I'm just open to what you're proposing as far as, what do you think is possible as far as a legislative solution to this?
From my standpoint, I'm a strong believer of the rule of law. And I feel they have sufficiently followed that rule of law. Irrelevant of my personal opinions or others in the community, the laws are made by the legislature. And if you follow them, you follow them. If that law needs to be changed going forward, okay. I guess that's where I was coming from with this. It sounds like transparency, et cetera. But where you stand now with Rockwell, I mean, I think all of us can collectively say, it's going to be quite hard to do something to some entity that has followed the law thus far, or so it seems. There are court cases, obviously, which are, we don't know what's going to happen with those. But that's where I was coming from. Going forward, where do you propose transparency, pilot, et cetera?
Well, and I think in looking, looking forward, looking at the personal property inventory tax, I think, I mean, that's not something that's only going to benefit or be a detriment to, however it's done, Jefferson County. But it's important for the entire state. And in order for us to be able to attract businesses and employ people and keep them working here and living here and playing here, we're going to have to come up with some kind of, of a way to be able to, well, we have to be competitive with other states. There's no question about that. And if that property tax, that inventory tax is keeping us from doing that, got to find a better way to do it. And I don't know what the answer is. I'm hoping that the legislature will come up with something like that. But it's important to Jefferson County and to every county in the state. So, I mean, even aside from Rockwell. So, but I know that that's what we're talking about today. But I think it's, I think that is important.
And Commissioner Nolan, I think one of the big things that we're coming from in Jefferson County is we have this unique climate in that we're fighting in a metropolitan business district.
Absolutely.
And when we talk about the legislation that we want to talk about or we want to affect law in a mindful way, we also have this unique job as legislators to scale that to the state of West Virginia. And I think actually, I think actually Paul touched on that a little bit, is when we're trying to shape this conversation, then how do we get our colleagues to buy in, in, you know, in southern parts of the state and northern parts of the state, et cetera, et cetera? And you're right, I wish I could have a silver bullet to this particular scenario. This is a very complex situation. And we're also talking about development go forward. I mean, really, it's Rockwell and development go forward, so.
We have to increase our tax base.
Yeah.
We can't continue to operate the way we're operating and expect to be able to provide the services that people that live here expect with the way things are structured now. It's got to, something's got to give here. Nobody wants higher taxes. Nobody wants higher taxes. Nobody wants higher fees. But how are we to be able, we have very limited, the county commission is very limited all over the state as to what we can do. We can only do what the legislature says we can do. And so there has to be a way for us to be able to provide the services. And yet, Jefferson County is unique. And I can tell you right now, the rest of the state thinks we're a bunch of snobs. I hear that all the time. And because of our proximity to the metropolitan area and because we are a part of that, you know, it's a different dynamic than anyplace else in the state. And Berkeley County sees a little bit of that. Morgan County sees a little bit of that. Beyond that, it's a, we're a totally different planet, on a totally different planet. So I don't know what the solution is, but we cannot continue to operate at the level that we've been given to operate on and to be able to provide the services.
But if I might, we do need jobs, certainly.
Absolutely.
But we should not go after jobs that have the serious potential to drive other jobs away. We have tremendous potential in the development of agriculture, in tourism. And I think with Amazon coming to Crystal City, I think there's going to be much more of an opportunity to get some office jobs from people down there that now have office workers from Dulles Airport in that are going to be priced out of that market because Amazon is going to drive up the cost of office space as you get in closer to DC. So we have an opportunity for that, too. And we should not go after a small number of jobs that might drive a larger number away.
Well, I can disagree with you on that because I want to see our residents live here, work here, spend their money here, play here, and actually be able to be involved in the community without having to spend three or four hours on the road commuting to Washington, DC. I want those jobs here.
I agree with you.
We absolutely agree. And I think another part for me, too, was considering what I like to call the economic ecosystem. And here, we have a diverse spectrum of what drives our economy. We have everything from our horsemen and equine industry, agritourism, agriculture, farming. And then all of a sudden, now we're gearing back towards manufacturing. And I think there's a mindful way to do manufacturing. I have a lot of concerns about this particular project, which I've actually voiced to multiple avenues in this particular one. But there was a way that, for instance, Procter &amp; Gamble came into this. And that was, that was a manufacturing plant that partnered to have a talent pipeline that wants to go to 100% renewable energy within an allocated amount of time. There's things that actually make them a good corporate citizen and a good corporate neighbor. And at this point, I have, I have a huge problem with this particular project because I'm not sure how you fuse those bonds anymore. I'm not sure how you heal the wounds that have been caused in the community. How, until you get past that, how are we going to affect law? Because right now, you have people so angry and distressed that we are now in a perpetual state of lawsuits.
Well, I, and I understand where you're coming from.
Yes, ma'am.
But...
And that was put forward respectfully, might I add, Paty Nolan.
I completely, and what I say is also said with respect for your positions and for what you're trying to do. But I think, I'm an advocate for being able to bring business to Jefferson County. I don't want to be a bedroom community. We've been that for many, many years. People, they come here, they buy their houses, they pay at a fraction of what they can buy in any place else. They pay a fraction of the real estate taxes that they pay anyplace else. Yet, when they move here, you know, they fault us for trying to build an economy where people can actually live and work here with living wage jobs. You know, everybody can't work in the tourism business. You know, everybody can't work a minimum job, a minimum wage jobs. Even teachers can't afford to live in Jefferson County after all of their education and the, what they have spent acquiring that education. Most of those people can't afford to buy houses here. They have to either go to Berkeley or they live in apartments or they can't afford to purchase their own homes. There is something wrong with that. And our proximity to Washington only makes that worse.
Right. You're absolutely right. And I then want to pose the question, and I posed this in both activist spaces, but then now as a legislator, what is it the industry that we're after? Because I think we need a clear vision. I think we need to clearly and concisely define what it means to develop and what it is that we're going after. So I'm absolutely with you. And I do think that, I mean, I'm obviously a proponent for living wages. I want job growth. I want that here in Jefferson County. Our folks deserve it. I have one of, I have the highest pockets of poverty between Charlestown and Ranson. There are homes that are not affordable. There are folks living in dilapidated homes and we have a homelessness epidemic. I absolutely want to pay people to work and I want to make sure they can live here. But then my question continues to be, what is it and how? How are we going to do this? And is it just plants like this? Or do we have a broader vision that's sustainable, that we can attract a full range of demographics, age, inclusivity? What is it that we want to do as far as development?
Madam President, I wanted to mention, yeah, I agree with you completely. We need more people who live here, working here. And I would point out that the, those, a lot of the people who leave the county are office workers between Dulles and Crystal City. And I think Amazon gives us an opportunity to bring in, many cases, their jobs back here to Jefferson County. I think we have an opportunity we haven't had before.
President, one quick thing. One thing that has not been mentioned yet, we are one of eight states losing population. So I know we need to tax, increase our tax base, but to raise taxes on a losing population is insanity. And I'll be frank here, my grandparents are from Morgan County. I grew up in Montgomery County. Our competitive advantage is low taxes. Look at the millennial generation, there's only a few of us in here. There's a massive trade-off. We forego the amenities. We are the ones having the younger families, et cetera, that large commute. So I definitely agree we need business here. I have a hard time understanding that people working for Amazon or whatnot in those areas are going to come out here, they'll be more techie-type generations, et cetera. I just don't see it happening.
They live here now.
Some do, but I don't, I don't see that happening as a younger generation here. It doesn't exist as nearly as much. That's a huge concern. I'm really scared for the 2020 census numbers. If we see there's a, we have a large aging population in this county or the state overall, that's terrible.
The state overall, yes, but not, not here.
I'm just saying, we need to maintain our low tax base in Jefferson County to be attractive because of the trade-off.
I think it's a serious mistake to judge the opportunities of Jefferson County by the losing population of the state of West Virginia.
But anything that comes out of legislature affects the entire state. So if you go to raise taxes on income or something, that will affect Jefferson and we will have no comparative, competitive advantage to other states because we don't have the amenities, et cetera. So just be cognizant of what you're proposing and what could happen. Because we could have people flood out of the panhandles quickly.
So a few points. First, those of you that I've had an opportunity to work with know that I've been a strong advocate for local decision-making. As Chair of the House Education Committee, my primary goal has been to empower our local school districts to make decisions closer to the classroom. And as a past member of the Political Subdivision Committee, took a very similar approach, voted for the expansion of the pilot program or the municipal home rule program, which was, I guess, a pilot program.
Different kind of pilot.
Yeah, that's right, different pilot. So, you know, that will continue to be my focus. And, you know, while folks can disagree with, you know, where the city of Ranson came down on this particular project, essentially you had local decision-making. Certainly, there was a state role in providing, you know, support through infrastructure, which, you know, I think that's, you know, probably going to be one of the more difficult decisions you all face. Going forward is what to do with that proposed infrastructure. But I'll continue to advocate for that. Very easy for me as a state legislature to try to dictate or try to say, okay, this is what I think. You know, a lot of folks believe in local control until the localities make a decision they don't agree with, you know? And I... And I always try to be very hesitant to, again, try to dictate to local entities, you know, what, what they should do with the freedom that I, I have fought to try to provide them. So, I will just indicate, I'll continue to be an advocate for local decision-making. Now, does that mean that a local entity doesn't have to follow the law? Absolutely not. I mean, obviously, there's local, state, and federal laws that they have to follow. Patsy, you touched upon the business tax base, and I couldn't agree with you more there. As a prior member of the Jefferson County Development Authority, prior to my service in the legislature, would often look to Berkeley County and see what they're able to do to expand their school system, for example, and other, other additional amenities in their community, because they have a business tax base, which frankly, you know, we've struggled to establish here. So, I think that's really, I would not, I would not look to the state, you know, to provide additional taxing authority. I just don't see that coming. I mean, that's, that's, I think where the state wants to help, and I think our caucus wants to help, is provide you the tools to grow your tax base, you know, through additional economic activity to provide additional resources for the things that we think are important here in Jefferson County. But as far as additional taxing authority, I just don't see the support for that whatsoever. And again, I think that really comes down to a policy decision. That's not going to be made in Charleston. That's going to be made right here, in this community, as to what that looks like. I did want to touch upon, just lastly, the natural gas pipeline, and I think Delegate Doyle might have touched upon the Maryland decision. Correct me if I'm wrong, and perhaps, Mr. Deal, you might be able to speak to this, but I don't believe that really impacts the availability of natural gas or the potential availability of natural gas here in Jefferson County. I think that's really designed, as I understand that project, that would come across the Potomac. As I understand that, that's really designed to provide diversity and service to Berkeley County, also ultimately provide some additional capacity there, but it's my understanding that the, with the existing gas infrastructure, they can provide gas, at least to the Rockwell Facility, that proposed area. I think really the question comes in, do you want to have natural gas available for other parts of Jefferson County or not? And again, that's really a policy decision ultimately, to the extent that this commission can impact that. But I will point out that Jefferson County is one of the, only a handful of counties in Western Indiana don't have natural gas. And I know for years, serving on the Development Authority, not having natural gas just really put us at a disadvantage when you're trying to attract any type of entity. And again, set aside Rockwell for the moment, if you will, any, you know, desirable, you know, significantly sized business, or even medium-sized business, they want to have access to natural gas. So, I think that's something, too, to the extent that this commission, you know, has a voice, I think that's something that you need to speak to. If you're serious about being able to provide a business tax base, those are the types of services you have to provide. It's my understanding, Rockwell, if they don't get natural gas, their permit provides for coal. Now, do we, is that, is that, is that what you'd prefer? I mean, I mean, those are, I think, the choices that are before you, at least with regard to that, but anyway.
It's not what I prefer, but that's what some people prefer.
Well. Point, Delegate. I have a hard time understanding how all our surrounding counties in Maryland, Virginia have natural gas, and our residents don't reap the benefit also of natural gas. I have a real hard time understanding that. So, if anything, we're just holding our kids and grandkids back from future endeavors or business prospects, et cetera. And I just, coming from Maryland, it's a lot cheaper to have residential natural gas, and future prices of gas are far lower, and it's a much cleaner source than coal. So, there, obviously, we want to be environment-economic, and we need to find the balance here. It can't be like this, and it can't be like this.
Right.
I just want to clarify, I think they're going to use coal no matter what.
They are using coal no matter what?
Yeah, they are.
I think if they had natural gas available, I mean, again, I don't know this, but I-
It only gets to so high temperature. I think they've said that coal has to-
That is part of the production of the, of the product. That's the whole, that's the whole point.
But even if not for Rockwell, I mean, let's just take Rockwell out of it. I mean, if you're serious about growing your business tax base, you're going to have to have natural gas in Jefferson County, I mean, it's-
I've got some concerns about the whole process. I know we have Mr. Deal here, and that's fine, that's local, we'll address that, the legislature will address that, but I think we've had push from the state or people beyond the state to have facilities. I remember the state pushed to have a plane manufacturer in Berkeley County that never made one plane, but the county spent a lot of money on that. And I think we've had facilities here. Luckily, not too many, that soon as their tax credits finished, they took off elsewhere. So, I'm a little concerned about the current national climate and the Charleston climate for what type of industries we get. And, you know, I'm afraid that the whole system doesn't have upfront notice to the people what we're getting. That's my concern.
If I, I agree with Paul about local control. The 22 years I was in before, I did the same thing he did, worked to make state laws more flexible so that local communities could make local decisions that were best for them. And so, Commissioner Compton, you're right, everybody has to obey the state law, but if we write a state law in such a way that there's flexibility for a local government to solve its own problem, problems, I think it is better off. And I am not in favor of taxing West Virginians more. I do think we can double the severance tax on natural gas, get about another minimum $200 million into the state budget. It is not a tax on West Virginians, it's a tax on the out-of-state corporations that develop our natural resources, and it will not cost us one single job because these two big pipelines, once they're built, are going to double the production, and the companies have invested so much money, $9 billion in one of them, $6.5 billion in the other, and they've, that they're not going to walk away from that investment. And they're not going to walk away because both of them begin in an area of West Virginia, about a six-county area, that has what the entire industry says is the sweet spot of natural gas. So, we can double the tax, and they'll still go after that gas, and no individual West Virginian will pay a penny.
Well, I guess we'll see when we come back here and speak to you how that tax increase proposal fares in the legislature. If you look at our surrounding states, you know, we do have probably the highest severance tax. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison because Pennsylvania, for example, has a little different tax structure, but I don't see a great deal of support for, you know, increasing that competitive disadvantages, frankly, that our extractive industries have. That's not, that's not, you know, you know, being protectionist for our, for our industry. It's, it's trying to, I think, being reluctant to exacerbate what's already a fairly non-competitive position for the extractive industry. I just don't, the reality is, I don't see it. John, perhaps, you know, feels differently, but I just don't see a lot of support for exacerbating that disparity.
If I could switch gears slightly, what were some thoughts about expanding our tax base from the commission? If I could write those down? Did you have any?
I mean, I don't think we should raise taxes on our county residents anyways.
No, no, no.
Expanding the tax base.
Oh, as far as the state goes?
What business to bring in to expand our tax base.
Yeah, no, we are, we are not trying to impose more taxes on our own folks.
I thought that's what you were saying.
No, no, no. That's not. But just some general ideas of what we were thinking, if we had any. If not, we can come back to it.
We're just on the spot here.
So, sorry, I thought this was a conversation.
Well, it is.
I thought we were chatting.
Let's move to Mark Train.
And, and, I mean, we have spent an hour on this already.
Yes.
And there's a lot more to say, but there are a lot of other important issues on here, too, and topics, and I think we, you know, we've kind of beat this thing to death.
To be continued.
To be continued at a later time. But, so, let's, if you don't mind, let's go on to discuss the Mark Train and the funding. Strategically, I went, I attended a meeting, some of you were maybe, I don't know, Jane was on the phone.
I was on the phone, yeah.
I think John, other, Sammy, other people were on the phone to discuss the Mark Train funding. And I think part of the problem that was, we have to figure out how we're going to fund that. County doesn't have funding to be able to do it. I think they said there were 150, about 150 people that ride from Jefferson County.
That's what I remember.
And, and the $1.5 million, to me, I can't justify, I can't justify even considering that kind of funding to, for, to supplement 150 people going to work in Washington. I'm sorry. But I just, it's not in our budget. We don't have a spot for it in our budget or on our line items, and, but, but it's a problem. And I just don't know what the, and Berkeley County has, has an issue, and, you know, people can drive to Brunswick and get on that train just as easily, maybe not quite as easily. But, you know, we just wonder if the legislature, or if you have any thoughts or ideas about how we can work to resolve that problem.
It's going to be more than 1.5 million. Maryland is asking us for 3.5 million per year. We have the legislature, and I commend my opponent, Riley Moore, my opponent in the election, for being able to get that. He worked really hard on that, to get the one and a half million that West Virginia came up with this year that caused Maryland to say, okay, that's fine for this year. Now, I do think there are ways that we can persuade Maryland to come down from the three and a half. How far down, I don't know, but whatever it is, I think the state is going to have to fund the bulk of it. Again, because of, and Commissioner Compton, I think you raised that issue, and maybe President Nolan, too. I am fond of using an example about how local government in West Virginia works. For 10 years, I sold college textbooks for a living. I was eight years with John Wiley &amp; Sons and two years with Oden Mifflin. And when I was with Wiley, we marketed a state and local government textbook that used West Virginia as the top-down approach. The author referred to it as a Soviet-style government. Now, this is 20 years ago, when the Soviet Union still existed. And it is indeed highly centralized. There's very little opportunity for initiative on the part of local governments. So, it is developed a psychology on the part of the people of West Virginia. If there's a problem, let's run to state government to see if we can solve it. I do think we need to get out of that. But at any rate, because of that, if we're going to solve this problem, the state's going to have to have the lion's share of the money. And the state has done this kind of thing for other parts of the state as well. About three or four years ago, we, the state, using federal money, a lot of it, but a lot of it was federal money allocated to the state to use as the state saw fit, built an inland port in Wayne County to serve Wayne County and Mingo County. Cost millions and millions of dollars to build that. And if we can do stuff like that for Wayne County and Mingo County, we can do it for Jefferson, Berkeley. I think it's just fair. So, again, I do think the local communities need to pitch in some. The two county commissions, the municipalities, that sort of thing. But I'm aware that the lion's share of it must come from the state.
John, I got a question.
Yeah.
Look, at that meeting, they showed the funding, and I guess maybe what Maryland will have a concern about is consistency, because I think the state was supposed to pay in a certain amount for four or five years and never paid a dime. And how are we going to be sure that, if the legislature says that it's going to be funded and that we have it? Because I'd like to see it be a long-range solution.
You're right. We would have to write the law in such a way that it guaranteed it. We didn't do that last time. Senator Herb Snyder and I wanted to, this happened in my last year in office before, or maybe it was 2011, my next-to-last year in the legislature. And Senator Snyder worked really hard on that. And we thought we had it, but at the last minute, Governor Tomlin said, no, let's just create a fund, and then the legislature can put into it each year what the legislature wants to put into it. And that's where what's called the hillbilly tax came from. Maryland decided, okay, West Virginia is not going to come through with it, we're going to have to talk, to tax the, had a surcharge on to the West Virginia riders, which I think Maryland didn't realize was just going to cause at least a fair number of the West Virginia riders to drive to Brunswick and get on, and now their parking lot is overflowing. I think there are avenues here to negotiate with Maryland, to come up with something that is reasonable, but you're right. One of the things they're going to need is, whatever figure is agreed upon, it's going to have to be written in such a way that they know they're getting it every year.
Well, and I also think that, you know, without the West Virginia riders, it's going to make a difference overall on the, on the trains.
Yeah. I mean, it's a nice chunk of the revenue that they're-
A chunk of revenue that, of people that go to work in Washington every day.
Higher, aren't they? Or ticket costs are?
Yeah, and actually, Maryland would lose federal money.
It would, that's right.
If we, yeah, so, like I say, there are plenty of openings for an agreement here.
Right.
Patsy, I think you've, excuse me, Jane.
Well, I just wanted to say that part of this Mark Train issue and the study that went forward was that ridership is down, and it's not only the West Virginia portion, it's sort of, it's reflected in the other routes, too. So, that's another component of this whole funding that we'll have to look into.
I think you're exactly right, Jane, and I think that's the biggest challenge. I've participated in each of these meetings that we've had since this kind of work group has been established, and worked very closely with Delegate Moore last year, and was pleased, pleased to support his proposal for the $1.5 million stopgap measure that, you know, got us, you know, another gear. But I think really, the big challenge is the ridership. And as you note, Jane, it's not just West Virginia, it's the other states as well. We do see a decline there. I think part of it is the increased telecommuting, you know, certainly, to the extent some folks have that, have that ability. But you're essentially, and the figure that I've heard, John, is 3.2 million, you know, maybe it's 3.5. But, so, if you're, the average West Virginia ridership, as I recall, was somewhere approximately 250 riders per day. That's an estimate, I mean, and it's not a, it's not an exact figure, but still, it seems to be pretty, pretty close to what, to what they're seeing on a monthly basis. So, if you do the math, 3.2 million divided by 250 riders, you're looking, you know, at a subsidy per rider of about almost $13,000 per rider. I mean, that's, that's, that's the challenge. And, you know, I think all of us here, you know, like the idea of having that Mark Train, having the accessibility. Certainly, it's a great selling point to, for the Eastern Panhandle, but that is, that's just a very, very hard sell. 3.2 million dollars for 250 riders, you know, those ridership trends are not our friend in this, in this, in this effort. So, I certainly, you know, Delegate Moore worked very closely with Senator Capito to try to insert some language in the THUD bill to, you know, provide some potential federal matching funds. Not sure where that kind of ended up. I think probably that process needs to start again now under the new, the new Congress, but certainly look forward to Delegate Doyle's leadership in this regard, and certainly will, you know, you know, try to make that case, but it is a difficult case to make.
Yeah, and it isn't just only the riders that benefit from the subsidy, it's all of us. Because the more people we can get off of our roads and onto the train, the more we benefit. And again, I'm not quarreling with your figures, Paul, but I think if we looked at what we spent per person on that inland port in Wayne County and Mingo County, that's a lot of money, too.
Well, I think another way to look at this, I'm on the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, is, you know, this price tag to me is astronomical and not the best use of taxpayers' money. I think Mark Train has served a great purpose, but the price tag has just become unreasonable. You know, there are buses that could take West Virginia residents to Brunswick. You could write the contracts, and I'm sure it would come to less than $3.2 million. So, I think we need to be realistic and look at other options that still have the service, but it's going to be a different configuration, and you're going to have to ride a bus and then get on the train at Brunswick. Now, I don't know what Maryland will think of that, but, because it will impact their funding to a degree, too, so.
They're going to check IDs at Brunswick or something? I mean, they could all be Maryland riders. Just one thing to Delegate Doyle's remark about the subsidy. I mean, if we subsidize a train for X number of residents, are we going to subsidize the other residents? a train for X number of residents, are we gonna subsidize the other residents' car costs, their gas, et cetera? That's a hard sell. I mean, for 150 people in a county with over 50,000, it's a hard sell for me. It's just, and just from the financial perspective.
No, we're helping them by getting people off the road.
Well, what if someone doesn't have, like, for instance, working in parts of Virginia and other parts, the train only is localized in certain areas. That doesn't benefit anybody else, except for working in those areas the train stops.
I agree. It doesn't benefit people to drive Route 9, but it benefits a lot of people that use 340.
That's, that's definitely a bottleneck with serious problems. I, I'd like to move on to the property safety.
Okay. Let's do it.
Nobody else objects?
Nope. So, this is really easy. It'll be the easiest topic that we discuss today.
But it's really important to get it done.
It is really important, and we've asked for it for a couple of years, but it really is important because we have, again, Jefferson County is unique. Many of our fire chiefs are also professional firefighters in other jurisdictions. Or they, you know, they have full-time jobs. So the legislation in West Virginia Code 713FF provides that a fire chief must be a member of the property safety committee. However, oftentimes, the fire chief cannot make that meeting because of work obligations or volunteer obligations. So, if you look in that code section, you'll see that the health officer is also a member, but it's the health officer or his or her designee. And all that we're asking is that 713FF, and I'll send you email on this, say, the fire chief or his or her designee. So that the fire chief can designate someone else to attend or to serve on that board for them, so that we can have a quorum and that our property safety committee can conduct business. So, we, you know, typically have a, a difficult time getting volunteers anyway for all of our boards. And we're asking, all of our fire chiefs are volunteer, with the exception of the director of our ESA. So we're now asking people who are already volunteering their time on something else to volunteer for property safety. And so all we need is for it to say his or her designee, and then we can have a fire chief designate someone to serve in their place.
I'm for it.
So it's really, it's super easy. It's the easiest thing, I think, we'll discuss. I think it's pretty non-controversial, I hope.
And it would solve a huge problem for us.
Yes, it would.
Feels good. All right.
All right, there. You gave you an easy one.
So I always like to ask the question, I think you've addressed it, Stephanie, who, what potential opposition do you see? Any?
I don't, I mean, we've had, we had a fire chief serve for many years, and then we just appointed a fire chief who didn't have time, who couldn't make any of the meetings, and said, okay, well, I have to resign. So I don't see any opposition for this, because the fire, whatever fire chief is appointed will be able to dictate, or maybe it could come from the Fire Association. They'll still be able to say who the representative is. It's just that it may, it may not have to be a fire chief, but someone within the fire service. So I don't see them opposing it. It's, they're still getting a seat at the table.
So it sounds like just something that nobody ever noticed before until there was a problem, and then you noticed, yeah.
That is right. So for years, we had a fire chief who came to the meetings, who was able to come to the meetings. Then we had a fire chief who was, an excellent fire chief, was also a career firefighter. And so many of our meetings, he was working a 24 or 48-hour shift and could not make those meetings.
In the language, and pardon me for not-
Yeah, I know.
But is there qualifiers? Are there anything that says what the designee should be, what their past experience should be?
Right now, it just says fire chief. And if you look at the health officer, it just says health, board of, health officer or his or her designee. We could certainly add qualifications to that, that they have to be a volunteer, or they have to be, you know, part of the leadership in the fire company, so that you're not just getting, you know-
Yeah.
-a new firefighter off the street.
Let's see some clarifying language.
Yeah.
But otherwise?
Yeah.
I will actually send it to you with my proposed language, that-
Great. Thanks, Stephanie. The next thing on the list is joint dual services legislation. And this has to do with the emergency services, EMTs, paramedics, and firefighters. And Stephanie, you have-
So, in 2008, we proposed legislation to allow us to create an emergency services agency, which we do have. However, it's not the bill we wanted. So I'm not looking, I'm not kicking a gift horse in the mouth, but it does have its limitations. So what happened was, is we worked together with the seven fire companies here to draft legislation that would provide for a joint services agency that provide, where the providers are both either EMTs or paramedics and firefighters. And by the way, that's the way every surrounding jurisdiction does it. It is the wave of the future. It will happen in West Virginia, even if those counties who oppose it do not realize it. And that's my, I'll get off my soapbox. So, the other fire companies throughout the state opposed the legislation, because they thought that it would result in them losing some of their power. Now, it's important to remember that our seven worked together on this bill, and all seven agreed with the language of this bill, and that never happens. So, I'd like to try again. And what I have done is take, I've taken the original language of the bill, and I have added language. It doesn't, so, let me go back, I'm sorry. So what happened is, they took our bill that we drafted, and they enacted a special bill that only applied to Jefferson County. And it allowed us to create the emergency services agency, which we have, but it didn't give the ability to collect one fee, as opposed to an ambulance fee and a fire fee. We wanted to collect one fee. So right now, we collect an ambulance fee, and we have to be very, we have to be very careful that we don't spend any of that money on fire. But it all goes to the ESA. So they have to be very careful to separate that money and make sure that it's only funding ambulance service, even though they're providing both services. So, I have taken the original language of the bill, and I have drafted it such that it only applies to Jefferson County, but it doesn't say that it only applies to Jefferson County. But it's clear that Jefferson County would be the only county that would qualify, because it applies only to growth county. And the term growth county means any county that has achieved permanent growth county status pursuant to the revisions of West Virginia Code 723, which is only Jefferson County, that's the Local Powers Act. So, and I, I did, so this is the original bill that all seven companies agreed on, and I, any changes that I made to that original bill are in red. So you can see if the, if the, if there's any heartburn amongst the seven companies. And I apologize, I did not have the opportunity to speak with them prior to this, because we just put it on at the last meeting before Christmas to discuss this. But I will meet with them and say, I want to push forward with, or the county commission is in favor of pushing forward this. The last time I spoke with them, they were in favor of it. So the only thing I changed, I put some legislative findings in to say, why do we need this? Why do growth counties need this? And the reason we need it is because it's more efficient to provide the services way. It costs less money to provide the service. And I know that there are other counties who are looking to us as an example. They don't do it this way yet, but they want to. They don't have the tools to do it. So you may get some pushback from the other volunteer companies throughout the state, I, I expect that. But I put that in so that you can say, well, it really only applies to Jefferson County. It couldn't happen in your county unless you're a growth county. So, that's what I did. That's the, the background of that. It would just be easier to calculate the money. And it would, it would actually result, it, it doesn't mean that the fee will change. It doesn't mean that the, that we will increase the fee. It just means that the fee that we have now, we could give to the ESA and say, ESA, you send it as you see fit. If you need personal protective gear for firefighters, rather than something on the ambulance side, you can buy that and not worry about running afoul of the legislation. So, the reason that the bill that was eventually passed, that was a special bill for Jefferson County, didn't meet our needs, is it doesn't allow the flexibility in the funding to use the money in the most efficient manner.
But if, if, if the bill were, that were passed, say, we get this in, I'm for it. If the, if the bill that were passed in this upcoming session, rather than your bill, ended up being a local bill again, specifically to Jefferson County, which just permitted the flexibility you're asking for, would, would that be an acceptable conclusion?
It would, as long as it passed constitutional muster. So, yeah, if it were a local bill that, that your, the, your legal people in Charleston said, yeah, that's constitutional to do that special bill just for Jefferson County, I would be fine with that. It's, I would prefer to have this legislation. I think you're gonna find some counties-
I prefer what you prefer, but, but we always have to anticipate if somebody doesn't like what we want. Even though they don't understand what it is, they still-
Right. And I think, you know, it's, it's not, like I said, it's not where you, but it's not like that in other counties. They, they have fire, they have volunteer fire, and they have ambulance, or they have private ambulance. If you look at Washington County, Maryland, Loudoun County, Virginia, look all around us to the east, they're all dual services. And it's, it's, it's how emergency services will be provided in the future.
It makes good fiscal sense.
Yes.
This will result in a tax increase eventually, though, just to be frank. How could it not? Fire and EMS are now part of the same, of the same fee. So now you can essentially fund two mechanisms with one fee, while you're funding one with one fee now.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I think it really will.
Well, what I would like, the point I would like to make, having served on the ESA board, is that we actually have to run two budgets. One with ambulance fee money and one with the other funds that come from the county commission. And so you're constantly checking which pot does this come out of and so forth. And my, my daughter is a deputy chief for the city of North Charleston, and as we move forward, in our area, and Berkeley seeing it, hiring their own firemen, this is the most efficient manner of managing labor in emergency services. You have a fire call, you've gotta have an ambulance on the scene before they can enter a building. It's just a fact of the regulations, the safety regulations. This, this is really the best way, and then just, you know, you're always trying to work around the budget to make it work, and you might have the total amount you need, but you may not have the money you need in the pot for a certain need.
Yeah. What's gonna determine whether or not you raise the fee is whether or not what you have gives you the total amount you need, whether you get it by two fees or one fee.
To that point real quick, though. So, here's the thing. Personally, if we're talking about, West Virginia does a good job about fees here, fees there, blah, blah, blah. I'd like to see a cap on some of these fees. Because some of these tax-loving entities at county levels can just keep raising fees in perpetuity. I mean, I think Morgan County raised it $100 one year and just keep doing that. I think the legislature should look at potential caps to certain fees. Because as it stands currently, if a county commission wanted to jack a fire fee or ambulance fee up to $1,000 per household, they could, I think, do it.
What would be your suggestion?
That would make us even more of a top-down state.
I know. I'm just saying, though, these increases, we've seen 100% fold increases in some of these fees in counties. So, I mean, this legislation will result in tax increases. Quote me on it.
Only if you vote for it here.
And I don't, I don't-
That's fine, then.
We do currently have the ability-
It's just the fact of life.
We do currently have the ability to charge both. We could also charge a fire fee. It's, the mechanism to do that requires a petition before you can do it. It's a little bit different. For the ambulance fee, the county commission can just enact an ordinance and charge the fee. For the fire fee, it does require a petition of a certain percentage of the people who voted in the last election or something like that. But we do currently have the ability to charge both of the fees. We've just never done the fire fee process.
I, I think my immediate questions were, what were the impact on the consumer right off the bat? So are we saving them money? Are, are we still getting you what you need for those services? And then I, I do want to discuss what the proper cap would be, if that's the suggestion.
Just one quick thing. I mean, with a fire fee and ambulance fee, you are then able to strip that funding out of the general fund and just raise both fees and reallocate the existing funding to those two mechanisms, thereby increasing taxes on residents and doing exactly what we don't want to do in a state losing population. So that's exactly what would happen. So that's why there needs to be some sort of cap.
Well, I think the other part you have to look at is the real-life fact that we're losing volunteers. And we need paid staff, firefighters and EMT. And we've gotta come up with a way to fund that. We're now at our max levy rate. Video lottery and, and table games are heading to zero very quickly. You know, we, we have to have, this is a critical service for our citizens, as part of our health and safety.
I don't think anybody disagrees to that. And that's why we need more business in Jefferson County. Berkeley County just lowered their levy rate, because their influx of businesses. So that goes into everything we all probably agree in, more business. So, sorry.
No. So, a couple of points. First, just from an organizational or a structure standpoint, the House will have a fire and EMS minor committee-
Okay.
-this year. We, we've had a joint committee for, for several years, but this would actually be a regularly meeting minor committee. In looking at the composition of that committee, at least the majority members, I don't have the list in front of me for minority members. I don't see anybody from the Eastern Panhandle on that particular committee. Zach Maynard is the chair, will be the chair for that committee. I think Buck Jennings is the vice chair. Looks like the closest person here to the Eastern Panhandle is Delegate Seipold from Preston County. But, but anyway, we'll, we'll have to see if there's anybody from, from our minority caucus that's on that committee here from the Eastern Panhandle. I'm not on it. It, so, it, it, it obviously seems much more complicated than the last agenda item.
It is, it is.
And so I'd say a couple of things. I'd need to see a one-pager on this to kind of explain it. And then, two, I think the issue that Delegate Compton, or Commissioner Compton brings up, I think that needs to be addressed. I think if this is perceived as a way to, you know, raise taxes on, on their constituents, you know, by county governments, I don't see much appetite for that. So that, that question needs to be addressed.
And I think, again, the county governments have the ability right now in the code section to charge both. And Berkeley County is one that does charge both. I think it's $160 for both of them, or is it more than that?
They just raised it again.
They just raised it again. So, we do currently have the ability to charge both. It requires you to run two budgets at the same time. So what we're asking is for one fee, because we're already providing the combined service. So we no longer really provide fire and EMS, we provide them both. You know, we put people in the stations and they respond to whatever the emergency is. If they're needed to go on a fire call, they go on a fire call. If they're needed to go on the ambulance, they go on the ambulance. So, I would say that there, I mean, we have the ability to charge both now, but we don't want to charge both. We just want to charge one, and have one pot of money, and give it to the ESA, which does have fire and EMS representation on it, to say, this is the best way, this is where that money is needed.
I, I mean, I definitely see where you're going for efficiency and, and cost-effectiveness simultaneously. The, it's not pushback. I, I think I just need to see it.
I have it, I've got it.
Wonderful. And then the other part, too, will always be for me, how does this affect the consumer? So if we can really do a deep dive into that, and, and, and discuss what that does for, for our community, then we can go forward.
Well, and in addition to the monetary amount, when we crafted the ambulance fee, it was always the, part of the language is reduce response times. That, we've got that CAD data now. We implemented that very expensive system, so we would have that response time data. We have reduced our response time. So as far as to the consumer, there may be a cost, but there's a, a great benefit on the other end, reduced response time. And that's what we're after.
That's wonderful. I mean, I, I think you really hit the nail on the head, which is, folks want to see the return on their investment. And there it is, right there. It's that we're effective, we're efficient, and we're here to save lives. This is what your money does. So when we come up with that kind of data, when we, when we really can speak to the language, then, you know, I think that's when we build the appetite for the legislation.
So we currently have station, we currently have 24-hour staffing in all of the stations with the most call volume, so 60% of the call volume. Those stations are now staffed 24 hours. And we have staffing in all seven stations now. So every station in the county has a staffer, whether it's 12 hours a day or 24 hours a day. You know, some of the outlying stations don't get as many calls, they're not as busy, so they may have 12-hour staffing.
Wonderful.
But we now have staffing in all seven counties, paid staffing to respond.
Out of fire fee.
I was about to ask, what is our ratio now to paid versus volunteer? Oh, don't, don't feel like you have to come up with the exact number.
And that would, so I think that the, the volunteer roster is very in flux, so they may have people on their roster, but they may not respond to as many calls. But I, I'd have to get that information from the volunteers.
Okay.
And I think, and I can give you, of course, the ESA stats on the, on the paid staffing. But I can tell you that on over 75% of the calls in Jefferson County, there's a paid staffer on that call.
Okay.
So it's very rare that you would see any, so most of our call volume is EMS, and it's rare that you would see a call with an all-volunteer crew.
Okay.
And it's probably in excess of 75%. And I can get you that data from our CAD data.
Wonderful. And allow, indulge me, maybe an obvious question, but the fee that we're collecting at this point, how are we appro- point, how are we appropriating that fee? Like, what percentage or what kind of dollars go towards?
100% of the fee goes toward the, goes to the ESA for. With the exception of the cost of collection, which is about $40,000, it pays for a person to send out the bills, collect the money. Everything else, 100% goes to the ESA. And it provides paid staffing in the volunteer stations. When the volunteers run a call, whether or not there's a paid staff, even if there's a paid staff person on it, they get to keep 100% of the revenue from that call. We do not, a lot of counties collect the revenue from the ambulance calls. We do not do that. So that's about 1.5 million in addition that we're giving to our volunteers, in addition to the $95,000 we give per station. So I think out of our general fund, not including the ambulance fee, we're giving about $2.4 million to emergency services out of our general fund, not including the ambulance fee.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Just to that point, that makes sense, though, because that's a vital service for residents. I mean, it's core responsibility of government is to protect the residents. I mean, fire and EMS probably falls under that umbrella. So, I mean, just to Commissioner Tab's point, to try to justify changing a fee structure to potentially increase the fee for a vital service that their existing tax dollars should pay for, or mostly pay for, I mean, I have a problem with that.
Also, I didn't want it to seem like I was discounting the volunteers. They are a key aspect of how we provide service. We could not do it without them. They own all of the equipment, the apparatus. But, I mean, it's very rare that you'll hear a volunteer say that we need help. And we've heard from all seven stations that they need the staffing. They requested the staffing. It isn't something that we imposed upon them. They came to us and said we needed help, which is how we started down this path. And the original bill, I don't know if I said this, was in 2008. So 11 years later, we're still here, trying to figure out a solution to provide the service to the counties.
Sure.
Or me, to the citizens, excuse me.
Okay, anybody else have anything on that? Okay, we'll move on to, here we go again. Unclaimed body legislation. That doesn't sound very pretty, and it isn't very.
It isn't a pretty.
Can I say one thing before, because I attended a hospital meeting at Jefferson Memorial a year ago. They're building a morgue, they said, in their reorganization. So that should, just to throw that out there.
That's great.
And where are they building the morgue?
I guess it should be a different wing or something, they're building it.
On the new complex, or they're adding it on to the?
They're adding on to the existing. They're not moving to the other.
They're not doing the other.
It's probably going to be a while. They do have plans for $30 million expansion out there, but it's going to be a couple, it's going to be a while.
Are you talking about the set off of nine?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, that's not, yeah.
The existing hospital's going to have a $30 million to add to it.
But the problem with it we have is it costs money to take care of that issue.
And we need the issue addressed now. We can't wait another, we can't wait until they get their morgue built to get this taken care of, so.
Yeah. There's a whole bunch of things that need to be changed.
So what is it you want done?
Well, right now, we have, when there is a dead body that is unclaimed by anyone, it's a problem transporting them to where they need to go. And right now, they're being accepted at, oh my gosh, I just.
Eccles Spencer's.
Yes.
Funeral home. As a public service.
But transporting them has been a problem, so.
Would you like me to give a small overview?
Yeah. We bought the van and all that good stuff.
Sure. Just quickly, and basically what this memorandum that I just gave you said, is there are times in the county when people pass away and for various reasons, there is no one to claim the body. And that leaves our EMS personnel in a very difficult position, simply because you have your trained EMS personnel who are there with the deceased, and obviously, they're not going to walk away and leave the deceased. So they end up having to stay there with them until either they make arrangements or somehow an arrangement is made to transport the body somewhere. The problem with that logistically is you've got your trained medical personnel who are just sitting there when maybe down the street, there's someone that needs their help, but they, you know, they're conflicted about where to be. And so the legislature could help this by making it more clear as to who takes responsibility for this dead body. And I believe there is an argument to be made in the existing statute that the medical examiner should do this. The medical examiner has interpreted the statutory scheme as it exists to say that it's not their responsibility unless it falls within a very narrow parameter, like if it's a murder or something like that, where they. I believe that there is an argument to be made, especially when you're looking at 6484-10, it says that the medical examiner shall arrange for transport. And you don't have that section with you. But the medical examiner takes the position that that only applies in the cases where they clearly have responsibility, which is like murders and that kind of thing. So I've drafted just some suggestions to amend both the statute 6112-8 and also the Code of State rules 6484-7, that basically just provides clear guidance to the medical examiner that they should come, they should charge of the body and leave the EMS personnel to do their job elsewhere. This is a severe problem here. I have made inquiries around the state, and it kind of varies in different places. Most places, it seems as though the funeral homes will come and pick people up like that. Here, we've had some good cooperation from the home that President Nolan mentioned. It's just that when you couple this issue with the problem with the opioids, it has created a massive problem, because the funeral homes are kind of inundated with folks who unfortunately, many have died because of the opioid crisis. And that leaves the funeral homes in a position where they are basically taking these steps to pick up the bodies to incur the various expenses and liabilities and things, really ineffectively, without much compensation, if any. And so if the medical examiner were, was directed legislatively to take charge of all the bodies in this situation, it would be an entire problem.
That makes logical sense to me, but let me, since Paul's not here at the moment, let me ask his question. Who's going to oppose it?
Well, I believe the medical examiner will oppose it. I know this is a difficult question. It may require an addition of funds to the medical examiner's office to give them more resources, and I know that's always a problem. But it is just a significant problem for our EMS personnel, the way it is. And what concerns me, and I think I'm only saying that because I think it concerns the EMS folks, is you're taking resources away from helping people who are alive, you know, and by making the EMS folks deal with this issue.
And my question would be, what would be the appropriation of funds at that point? Because it does sound like we have to shift not only responsibility, but then some funding.
Well, it's not clear that the county really has responsibility.
Okay.
That's also a problem, is that we're doing something that we don't really think we're enabled to do, but we want to treat people with respect. So no matter how that person passed away.
Appreciate your candor, yeah.
You know, we have to, we don't want to leave them.
Yeah. And as you know, this is a Dillon's Rule state, and typically, counties and other government entities are only allowed to do things that the state has enabled. I believe that the county does have authority, possibly tenuous, but its authority under the DHHR rule 9101, it's called a death-in-the-field protocol. And that basically says that the EMS is not required to transport the bodies, but they may if it's like a community practice. And so that is the authority that we have been operating under to enable the EMS to do that.
Well, and we, you know, we are all concerned about the liability issue. The county has bought a van specifically for this purpose, so it does not take an ambulance out of service. Off-duty staff members of the ESA are called to respond to these situations. So, and we're very thankful that those folks will step up and do this work. But, you know, they need to be paid. So we've taken the steps that we feel we can, but it's really not a long-term solution. We feel there's liability in transporting a dead body. And then somebody finds out their grandmother died by herself, and then they go to the funeral home, perhaps to claim the body, and then go, where's your ring? Where's this? Where's that? There's, you just, there's a whole snowball effect that could come about in certain situations. So, you know, the opioid crisis really just pushed everybody to the limit. And then the funeral home said, we're full, we can't take anymore, and we're not getting paid, and.
Well, do you think, do you think the State Funeral Directors Association might support this?
I would think that they would, especially if there was a, some way to help compensate the local funeral homes. And that might be a cheaper workaround than establishing a new bureaucracy in the medical examiner's office. You know, that's, it's a good point. We have, as Commissioner Tab said, we've created a workaround that isn't, doesn't work too well, but it does work.
Right.
You know, an ambulance, if you have a body in an ambulance like this, you have to go through a big decontamination procedure. It's time-consuming and expensive to do that. Hence, it's problematic, but it is a significant issue in our community, especially.
Does anybody recall how much the taxpayers are paying for this yearly? I know it just started recently, but do you recall how much we budgeted for this service?
Was it 20? I want to say it is 25. So we bought the van, and it was like $25,000 or something.
It's like the ESA cost factored in. Do you recall, like roughly, does anybody have an idea?
No, I think that is the ESA cost.
Oh, just yearly, it's 25?
So we were, yes.
Okay.
What other resources did you need to make this really function at its highest capacity? It's not just a van. I imagine you need much, much more.
Yeah, well, I think the best solution would be to get the medical examiner involved. The second-best solution may be, and probably the cheaper of those two, may be what you just suggested, which was somehow have the funeral homes be able to step up and be sure they were going to.
No, no, that was not my suggestion. My suggestion was to seek the support of the Funeral Directors Association in support of your bill.
Okay.
Well, and that may well be, because when, even if there's somebody attending a death, and they call the funeral home, and the funeral home says, I want $6,000 or $7,000 before that body is transported to me, and they can't do that, they walk away.
How often does that happen?
Quite a bit. Especially the truck death.
Sure.
Or something like that. Or just.
Yeah. Or it's the neighbor that found someone, you know, and there's no other family close by. So that's what we're looking at.
Sheriff in bind sometimes, because he has to go out and sometimes negotiate with the funeral home, the hospital, and that's not his job.
Right.
So I understand Delegate Doyle might have asked this question while I had stepped out of the room. As I understand the language here, your proposed language, it says, "The chief medical examiner or his or her designee who is under the chief medical examiner's authority, or the county medical examiner or assistant county medical examiner, shall take charge of the body and make arrangements to remove, transport, store, and subsequently arrange for final care of the body." Do those folks support this legislation?
I would seriously doubt that they would support it.
That's probably why we keep talking about this every day.
The medical examiner does. Do, right? Am I right about that?
I believe that's correct. It's, the interpretation of the medical examiner here has been that they are only responsible for the body if it's a particular narrow case, which is, involves a murder or something like, they are, they call it an ME case. I think there is a tension in the legislature, I'm sorry, in the legislative authority and the Code of State rules. There's a tension between a couple of the clauses, where one section says that they shall take charge of the body and one says they may. And that's kind of a problem.
Stephanie, did this, did this language actually make it into an introduced bill last year?
I don't think it did.
I don't think so.
I thought, I thought one of my colleagues, I thought somebody had kind of said, yeah, we'll run with this. But, I mean, we could certainly get it drafted, but if those folks are not going to support it, it.
And, you know, it's not uncommon.
Went last year.
The Eccles Spencer, like the storage.
Cooler.
The cooler. I mean, it's not uncommon for the ESA director to say, it's full if we have another unclaimed death. We don't know where we're going to put that person until someone's claimed them. It's not, we're not talking about, we're not things that could happen, we're talking about things that have happened, so.
But building off of your suggestion about support, Mr. Doyle, the, I suppose another workaround would be to somehow assure funeral homes so that they could, cost or something through some legislation in these kind of cases, and then.
Would that not be more expensive than the approach taken in your bill?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's a really good question. It depends on if there needs to be a much larger bureaucracy created.
I'm willing to sign on as a sponsor to your bill. I agree with Paul, it might be difficult getting it through, but at the very least, we need to run the flag up the pole to see who salutes it and who fires bullets at it.
And I think you may find that in some of the other counties farther in the state, I think you'll find that the funeral homes are more willing to do it because they have less of these cases to do. I think that's an issue, you know, just like we were talking about their jobs issues before and things. It's an issue that, out here, we have a little more of a problem, I think, than some of the interior counties may have.
Let your minutes reflect that Delegate Doyle has assumed ownership of this item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At least we'll get a bill, you know.
Yeah.
A related issue, slightly different. I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, we enacted legislation that, as I recall, I think that just the legislation empowers the funeral home operators to utilize cremation, you know, under most circumstances, in order to address, you know, unclaimed, indigent bodies. Are you familiar with that? I'm just kind of curious how that, how that, is that having the positive impact? The funeral directors, as I understand, they agreed to accept a reduced amount, you know, per body, because it's less expensive to cremate as opposed to do a full burial. And the idea was that would allow for more indigent bodies to be, you know, properly handled. Any feedback on that legislation?
I do not personally have feedback on how that has worked out in the homes. It is, as you said, slightly different in that, and the thing that I'm talking about is the person has just passed away, or they've just found the body, and you've got to get that body from there to the funeral home or to the morgue, if the hospital is able to build one. And, but I am not personally aware of the funeral homes.
Let me see, John, that statute.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. On to. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there is another, a couple of other items that are not listed on here. One of them has to do with tourism. Elliot Brown, I think you might have mentioned that we wanted to talk about tourism a little bit.
Elliot Brown, I think you might have mentioned that we wanted to talk about tourism a little bit.
Yeah, I, maybe just, I mean, it's a broad strokes type of a question to the commission, but were there any thoughts or, or how we want to kind of attack this for Jefferson County? How we want to build some revenue there? What things we need for a friendlier climate? What can I do for you?
Well, I think, I think one of the biggest issues that just came to my attention was Airbnbs and hotel motel taxes for Airbnbs. And I think we're missing a lot of that revenue. And I don't know if, you know, I, I think there's, there's a, it's not fair to hotels that collect that tax. And I think it gives them an unfair advantage. Airbnb's an unfair advantage because they're, apparently they're not required to, to collect that tax at this point. And so I think that it would be a good thing to any, any establishment, Airbnb, bed and breakfast, anything that falls under renting rooms for people that are away from home and they rent rooms. I think there should be some kind of legislation that would ensure that, that people are paying and, and that the prior, the owners of the property or proprietors are collecting and submitting that, that hotel motel tax, that, the same as the hotels are. Hotels and motels. So, I don't know if Annette might have more to say on that?
Yeah, so, thank, thank you, Commissioner. So, basically, for the last couple of years, we've been addressing an Airbnb and not wanting to run any legislation. As Paul knows, we, we've kind of avoided that thinking, first, let's educate. Let's educate, let's talk about what really is a lodging establishment? And who's following the state code? Because the state code says that, you know, anything over so many days now has become a lodging establishment, and you must charge, collect, and remit the 6% hotel motel occupancy tax. Last year, we just, we discussed this, and as Paul knows, the state tax department, and I'm sure John knows this too, the state tax department came out with a publication reinforcing the definition of what is a lodging establishment? And that if you run an Airbnb, you are to charge, collect this hotel motel, and remit. Last year, I watched during legislation, I was in a committee and got a call from the county's and municipality's lobbyists that, in one of the committees, they were trying to do something to remove Airbnbs and rentals from having to do that. They were trying to attach it to something. So, we got that kicked out of there. They, they were trying to amend it, but the person doing it was lobbyist for Airbnb. We've gotten that much attention. Jason Webb, and I think, John, you know Jason, and Paul, you know Jason, he's now the official lobbyist for Airbnb. So, we've had heads last year over this issue. Well, Jason and Airbnb are now coming out saying, they're kind of doing the numbers for us. They're saying, the state of West Virginia now, and that's the information I passed on, I believe, to Paul and Patsy, that it's, it's a 10 million revenue for West Virginia. They've actually put a number on it. We didn't have to. They put a number on it. Whether that number's correct or not, I'm not sure where they got it. But they're saying Airbnb homeowners have collected $10 million in revenue. And when you do that math, you figure out what we're missing in hotel motel. But better yet, they put Jefferson County as number two on that list, Pocahontas and Jefferson.
I believe that.
1.4 million. 1.4 million. So, that means there's $84,000 potential in hotel motel that we're missing out of this county. 84,000, and just the number they're putting out. So, what I'm saying to the three of you is this. As the hospitality and travel and the CDB Association for the state to represent both, I will be down there lobbying. I don't think we're ready for legislation to go attack this yet, but be careful because Jason's going to be trying to have it so that it gets pulled. But, we might have to eventually address that. Right now, we have an appointment with the state tax office because the code, the article itself for hotel motel is legally binding. Brian Helmick, as most of you know, has made an opinion that that, that's legally binding, and Stephanie can tell you, it really is pretty...
Are, are we collecting the money now?
No, because, John, on the platform for Airbnb, Home Away From Home, and all those others, it really makes it almost impossible for you to add that unless you put it in under fees, unless you, as the property owner, do that. Now, last year, what Airbnb wanted to do was, what they've done with states surrounding us is come up with a collective agreement, right? Stephanie, isn't that what they did? And they had the state say, we'll give you, we'll say it's 5 million. That was what they discussed last year. Now, they're coming out ironically saying, I think it's 10 million. And that's what other states have found, that they, they've really underbid the number. They've really come down and said, it's this, and we'll just pay the state that amount.
Well, my position on that i- is this. Beyond the revenue, the revenue's of course important, but the far more importantly, if someone goes into the hotel business, that person should be required to collect the same taxes that any other person in the hotel business is required to collect. It's a matter of simple fairness.
How would you enforce that, though? There were just, how would you enforce, is this self-reporting? Is someone going to scour Airbnb ads? Are you going to individually audit these folks?
Well, unless you have, so, what some of the counties have done, Pocahontas is number one on the list, and, and their sheriff has become pretty active in enforcing it because that's who has to enforce it. In our case, would be the sheriff and the chief of police for the municipalities. And so what happens is, when that trigger comes up that says, this property is being used in Airbnb, there's a nice little letter that's been sent to them that says, hey, we kind of noticed that you're listed on Airbnb and using your property as a rental. You need to do the following. And it's not, you're right, John, it's not just hotel motel. It's everything. I mean, we're missing the vote on all of it. Plus, it's unfair competition.
You're missing property tax revenue as well.
So, I'm not sure we're going to have to attack it legislatively yet.
Okay.
I think that day may come, but that, that's the number-one concern. And like, like Patsy said, it's 1.4 million is what, even on their terms, Airbnb's saying. And if that's Airbnb, that doesn't even include Home Away From Home and any other sites that are, that are being used.
They're going to evolve, though, to get around that somehow, or develop some backdoor app or something to get around that. There'll always be a step ahead. That's the problem with technology these days, too. And you run a fine line between private property rights and the sheriff pounding on your door saying, accusing you of this. Because the homeowner could say, I didn't actually do it. How, how would you...
Except they can see that you're listed on some sites. You're marketing yourself as Airbnb, or as a, as a third party. You're marketing yourself.
And I think that our sheriff does follow. We've had that discussion before. He does, he does look into things like that and investigates them. Okay. Anything else?
Well, and then just the biggest part is, I'm not sure what the messaging will come out of Tourism Office, but the eight-to-one will, will definitely be the message that for every dollar you spend in tourism, there's an $8 return. And it's important because, as Paul knows, last year, we were going around trying to get additional funding for Tourism Office that would increase our marketing and bring more people to the, to the state. While we did not get it initially, we did get in the, if there was a surplus, unless I'm saying that correctly, Paul, if there is a surplus, we did get into the line item, an additional 2.5 million. I think it will be, I know it will be the initiative of the Tourism Office to ask for additional money, again, to try to help promote our state. We're woefully underspending promotion of our state. And as we know, the county ranks number one. You all have had all those numbers. You realize that we are looking at, in the Eastern Panhandle, almost a billion dollars of the 4.1 billion that the state's touting as the visitor's spend. I, I would love it if we could get our fair share back of that, but that, that's not, that's not going to happen. And the last initiative will be, we are, Paul, we will be talking with you on the House side, with Charlie Trump on the Senate side, to try to get some more of the, this legislation regarding alcohol bills. Sunday, Sunday sales, I hope, could happen this year, where we can help with Sunday sales of distilleries, breweries, and wineries, and some other pieces of legislation regarding alcohol, small resort license, which you've got passed with the large resort license, but we need to look at the small one, and there's some catering. That, that big bill that Charlie Trump had last year, we need to look at that a little bit more and define what, what's our priority. But, but we will be asking for some sponsors on that moving forward.
The breweries, I mean, even the one in Virginia that just, I, I let the owner know that Harper's Ferry is actually in West Virginia, but the, even that, Virginia is just decimating us in that regard. I mean, just decimating us. And I see tons of our residents there, not that I go there a lot, but...
If you did.
No, Commissioner Compton's absolutely right, and a large part of the problem was with the state ABCA. We simply have to get, I, I have talked to Agriculture Commissioner Leonhart about the question of wineries. I think it's just, it's ridiculous. We have the same soil and the same climate as nearby Maryland and Virginia, and they've got a tremendous winery business, and we've got essentially zilch. We got a couple of small ones, but that's about it. And, and I think there's tremendous potential there.
I'm biased. My state's way more beautiful. So, anyway, I have a concerted interest in this one in particular. Maybe it's because I'm the millennial. I don't know, but the fact of the matter is, we're getting crushed. So, what can we do? Yes, ma'am.
And Paul, do you think that it is a more friendlier environment on the House side to get some of this Sunday sales passed through? I know you personally have worked really hard to help, help me with legislation.
I, I know a lot of folks have, you know, pointed to our former Speaker, Speaker Armstead, as, as being the, the roadblock to that type of legislation. But, I would point out that it was under Speaker Armstead, or a significant part of it. We did the craft beer legislation, which has caused our resident brew licenses to more than double in West Virginia. And of course, we've seen a lot of the activity here. The resort licenses, we were able to accomplish that. The brunch bill, we're able to get that as well. And then legislation, I think, a few years prior where, well, even Shepherd University, for example, their, their pavilion where they, you know, they, you can do, you could do alcohol sales there at, at certain, certain sporting events and so forth. So, all those were done, you know, under, under Speaker Armstead. So, but I do think it's, it's still a bit of a challenge. There are, it really comes down to, and I guess as a majority whip, I'm more cognizant of this than, than ever, 51 votes in the House and, and, what, 18 over in the Senate? So, it's, that's really what it, what it, what it takes. And, you know, certainly we can look at that. We need to get that legislation refined on paper and, and get it, get it, you know, on a, on a committee agenda in order to move forward with that. But there, you know, the, the challenge with those types of piece of legislation is that they do, despite the fact that here in the Eastern Panhandle, I think our, virtually our entire Eastern Panhandle delegation, I would, I would estimate, would be strongly supportive of that type of legislation. There are districts where, you know, their legislators will not support that. And, you know, it, it comes down to how much time it will take to get those through. And can you get through a clean bill that, that isn't amended with, you know, poison amendments that basically make, you know, make passage, you know, futile? So, but certainly happy to take a look at what you're, of what you're doing. And then it's, it's a matter of reaching out to all the stakeholders. I probably don't have to tell you this, but if you ask retailers, there's not unanimity among retailers about Sunday sales. I mean, there's a lot of them that would just assume not have to deal with that. So, it's, you, you really have to, I don't know how much of that's been done as far as reaching out to the various stakeholders to understand where they are. But, you know, it's, it's certainly helpful if you can get all of the stakeholders, you know, singing off the same sheet of music, so to speak. That's, that's, you know, you know that was imperative in order to get the brunch bill across the finish line, so...
Well, Sammy and I were just talking. We think we can get all 41 votes in the, in the Democratic caucus.
Democrats love that sort of thing.
If he's right about 51, all we need is 10 on his side, and we can get it passed.
Whip 10 votes for me, Paul.
Well, just again, it really comes down to how, how much opposition you'll get. And, you know, you'll, you'll see, John, I know is familiar with this, and you'll, you'll see it in person. I'm sure you've seen it...
In a week.
...in other ways, but it's, you know, you can, you can use an inordinate amount of time on legislation that just, it's going to cost other bills to not make it across the finish line. So, just, I'm certainly committed to trying to bring our alcohol laws, you know, up to where they need to be so that we can be competitive with our surrounding states. You know, you have my vote on that, so...
And over and over, be competitive with our surrounding states. And every issue, we keep hearing that.
And I know there was a, there was a comment made earlier about, you know, what kind of industries should we have? I think actually Delegate Brown, you might have mentioned it. I don't think that's our role. I think our role is to create the conditions that allow, you know, entities to want to locate here, want to expand here, want to stay here. So, I don't think you'll hear too much from me as far as we want this specific industry or this specific industry. I think we want to create the conditions so that all industries who are willing to abide by our local, state, and federal laws, you know, want to locate here.
Well, and I'm going to follow up on that and change the subject a little bit, talking about a local industry that we need to support, our horsemen. And I know they have been waiting for years for the Breeders' Fund. Am I using the right term to be made whole?
The Breeders' Fund and the Purse Fund.
And the Purse Fund, yeah. That there was some money borrowed to fix workers' comp years ago, and I don't think that money's been earned. So, we've been talking about, hopefully, great budget numbers, and I think that needs to be put forward as a major priority.
Well, I've already, I've already pre-introduced legislation that would rectify that. And again, Jane, you're referring to legislation, well, there was a, a request, an agreement by a number of stakeholder groups, including the horsemen, the coal industry, the timber industry, some other major industries, to participate in helping pay down the unfunded workers' compensation, you know, debt. And the horsemen, although I think it could be easily argued that they really did not contribute to that, to that unfunded obligation, they did agree, I don't know, I'm not sure how much, how much, how much... Yeah, but, and, but unlike the other entities, once that fund, once that debt was retired, this, I guess, last year, the, the horsemen, because of a piece of legislation that was passed, you'll recall the haircut bill a few years ago? Well, there was a provision that was placed into that, and, and John might be able to speak to this a little bit because I believe you were working for, were you working for Bob Kiss at the time?
Yeah, I worked Secretary Revenue when that was passed.
And, and so that piece of legislation, there was a, there was an amendment that was, that was put in that that I think unbeknownst to the horsemen, that basically said that you're not going to get the money after the, after the, the debt is retired, unlike the others, you're not going to get that money back. And so, do have legislation that would basically make right or reverse that, that provision that basically prevented the horsemen from, from getting their funding back.
Yeah, and, and that was inserted at the last minute, not only unbeknownst to me, but unbeknownst to Secretary Kiss. And, anyway.
Well, I know that Secretary Kiss, I know, was a frequent, in his, in his presentations before the House Finance Committee, he frequently questioned, why do you not put the horsemen's money below the line? Because he wanted it below the line so that the legislature and the administration could basically get to it. And so, I'm not sure I buy that he was not aware of that after he...
No, he was not, he was not aware of that last-minute provision.
Okay.
That basically put 40% of whatever was remaining available for appropriation, which a lot of that's been taken on an annual basis. It's gone up from a million to 2 million to 4 million to 8 million. You know, so what's happened is, is the horsemen's, you know, when the video lottery came in, Penn National came in, we went from the bottom of the mid-Atlantic to the top. We were revered. Of course, like everything... Of course, like everything else was talked about here, there's been state competition, you know, in Maryland, which was at the bottom, Virginia that's at the bottom. Maryland has recouped through their legislation. Ohio has joined in and really hurt Mount near Park up in Chester County. And now Virginia is rebounding big time with the legislation that they have. So all of that is causing horsemen whose purses are now 50% less than what they were in 2007. And our expenses are 50% more than that, you know, to basically say, hey, there's no future here. We're, we're going to have to leave. The permits given by the Racing Commission, and I have documentation, went from $11,000 to $5,700, I think, last year. I mean, this shows you the attrition of people leaving. It's making it also very difficult for the agricultural industry because the horsemen can no longer afford to buy the hay and the straw and pay the increased prices that are at southern states or for feed. They just, they just don't have the wherewithal to do it. Our racing days have gone from 220 to 160. Again, that affects all your tourism. That live racing day brings these people in here, you know, and, and affects them at the gas stations, the restaurants, and so forth. So we, I've also done an economic study where 12 to 14% of your workforce in Jefferson County is basically horse-related industry. And that's without the track, the track jobs. You know, every place you see where there's a little farm or whatever, it's a huge, huge dollar amount. And that's why we've been trying to say each year, you know, to encourage help up there. I do think that our situation's good. I will show you here, this is a resolution that the County Commission, the last one in 2016, gave us. It's dated March 3rd, I believe. But, you know, to support us, we also got these from the other four municipalities so that every municipality is on record as supporting this industry, you know, and we had a bill last year that almost reached the finish line. It passed the Senate 34 to 0. You know, just went through both the House and Finance and Judiciary, went over to Judiciary, got one dissenting vote, and then it hit Finance, and then you had Armstead there. And they also had the, with the teachers thing, there was budget, budgetary problems.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, the Speaker really didn't have a role there. It was really a matter of when the employee pay raise, which again attracted broad support, bipartisan support, once, that was about $150 million item. And at that point, tourism went along the wayside, the workers' comp bill, there were a number of items, pretty much all of the governors proposed additional funding for economic development and so forth. All of that was basically removed from the budget to basically be conservative. You know, we did not want to spend, we wanted to honor the teacher pay raise. We didn't want to put ourselves in a position where we headed to a mid-year budget cut. Now, again, fortunately, you know, the, the governor's prediction that, that we would, that revenues were headed in the right direction have, have, have been borne out, but we, we took a cautious point of view. But I do believe, and I've shared this with you, Randy, and your, and your board, I do believe, I'm more optimistic than ever that we can actually get that across the finish line. I have been in close conversations with a delegate householder who will be our incoming Chair of the House Finance Committee. He is committed to running the legislation. And again, with the current budget situation, I feel more confident than ever that we can get that, get that addressed.
That's, that's good news. I'm glad to hear that.
Paul, I assume you've gotten Randy's email. I didn't know if the other two had. Randy's got a very good layout of all the legislation and the history. I put it with our county administrator here. If you haven't, if Randy hasn't sent it to you.
I've got, I've got copies here.
All right.
Of eight copies.
He's got the detailed history.
Yeah, I, I haven't gotten it, so.
I can forward it, I can forward it to them because Ralph forwarded it to me, so I can forward it to them.
The other thing that I do want to say is, is there's a feeling amongst the horsemen, we gladly gave into the mansion fund. I mean, we didn't gladly give, but we accepted it as a responsibility, even though we committed none of that debt. The deal was, is that when, when it was paid off, that we would get, or all of the entities would no longer have to pay into the fund. We are the single entity that is still in that fund paying right now. All, everyone else, coal, gas, oil, all these big guys have been let out, and they are still sticking us, even though what I've been told is it's approximately $100 million that's somewhere in the workers' comp. And there's only, you know, the last time I was told by my lobbyist, $28 million owed. They could easily pay it off and let us out. They haven't done it. The other problem was, is as John said, the, the 2014 haircut bill, you know, I reluctantly, as President, agreed to the 10% reduction. This bill winded through and it had all kinds of ups and downs. It was stopped by Unger and your Senator Snyder at 12 o'clock, and it was one of three bills put on the special session of the legislature. I was told, and everything we had seen was told, this was nothing more than the bill that came from the House with, was a 10% reduction. And I said, okay, if that's it, run with it. Herb was the same way. He would tell you that he voted upon that, everyone voted upon that premise. Somehow, between after the passage of that and way it went through Musgrave and the lottery and whatever form it took, it changed. And we feel that that should never have happened.
He's right.
So keep your eye peeled.
I voted against it. You know? And, but obviously, there was more to that bill than what met the eye.
Well, we just want to get it straight and try and get back on track. I think it's important to the whole, the whole county's economy and to our culture. I mean, racing, since they race through the streets of Charlestown and, and whatever's always been a part of, I mean, you know, and I think are proud of part. We have a lot of firsts in this industry. Even though we're a small track, people recognize us in big places, you know, being pioneers of, of the industry.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you so much to our three delegates for coming out this afternoon, spending some time with us, listening to our concerns, and we have a busy, a busy session ahead of you. I mean, just hours alone could probably keep you busy, I mean, busier than busy throughout the session.
I'd like to do this again at 6 o'clock across the street.
Okay. All right. So, but, but many thanks to you and congratulations, and we appreciate the time. If you can be with us and listen to us.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys. Thank you.
And with that being said, I'm easily adjourned.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You don't get a vote here.
Double duty.